Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. I'd like to call the City Riviera Beach Budget Presentation Workshop to Order, Monday, August 12, 6:05 PM. Mr. City Manager.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor Ronnie Felder.
Here.
Chairperson Keshamba Miller Anderson. Chairprotem Julia Botell.
Here.
Councilperson Trodrick McCoy.
Here.
Councilperson Shirley Lanier.
Yeah.
Councilperson Douglas Lawson.
Here.
City Manager Jonathan Evans.
Present.
City Clerk Claudine Anthony is present. City Attorney Don Nguyen.
Here.
You may proceed.
Thank you. I'd like to have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilperson Lanier.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager.
All right. Madam Vice Chair, members of the City Council, this item before you this evening is the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Budget Update. Just briefly, this is what the agenda consists of, an overview of the city's tax base, overview of the city, budget overview, fiscal year 2020 challenges for consideration, and the FY20 budget calendar. So the first slide we'll talk about here is the City of Riviera Beach Assessed Taxable Value. If you can see during the Great Recession, the City of Riviera Beach experienced a significant decline in 2008, 2009, and 2010. And then we started seeing some incremental growth that allowed for us to see the economic conditions improve. And if you take a look in 2008 and all the way to 2015, you can see that we're finally, during those years, got to a point where our taxable value within our community got back to the years where we're starting to see some growth occur. So the economics in our community as it relates to the taxable value has grown and is continuing to grow with some of the development that we are experiencing now. Specifically, in 2015, we saw a growth of about 35 percent in the assessed taxable value within our community. So one of the things that we need to be conscientious of is that these particular ebbs and flows in taxable value growth happens in waves. And so one of the things that we will be discussing in other slides is how do we diversify our revenue streams? Because you'll see that tax revenue, ad valorem revenue, is the city's largest revenue stream. So going into the next slide, we talk about the largest taxpayers in the City of Riviera Beach. And you can see that Florida Power, with their investment here, is quite sizable, and they pay approximately $8.4 million in taxes to the City of Riviera Beach. One of the things that we will discuss as part of future budget conversations is the value of their asset will continuously depreciate, so that number will actually invariably go down. And so with that being such a large revenue stream for the city, we have to start looking at other ways to make sure that we have some stopgap measures, because as that asset gets older, obviously, it depreciates in value. As you go down here, you can see that the Port of Palm Beach, tropical shipping, those are all important elements of our taxable value and helps us to be able to fund government to the tune of, you know, $44 million in ad valorem revenue that's collected, associated with our entire tax levy. The next slide talks about residential, non-residential, tangible personal property, and centrally assessed. You can see that residential property makes up about 55 percent of the tax levy, non-residential is 17.8 percent, and tangible personal property is 26 percent. In most communities, the tangible personal property is not as high. We're very fortunate to have the industrial base that we do have, because we're actually getting value for some of the equipment that they do have within their facilities. So if you look at some of the operations that are sophisticated operations in our community that have a lot of mechanics in there, we're also getting the assessed value for the property, but the tangible personal property that they have invested. So when we go to grand openings and we see a lot of this robotics equipment, there is certainly a lot of value to the city that we collect, to the tune of about $10, almost $11 million with that tangible personal property. The non-residential, obviously, that's some commercial, that's mixed with second homes, those types of things, or other investments. And then you have your residential, for a total of $41.8 million. This next slide is a slide that we're going to spend a little bit of time on, and I probably will have the Finance Director assist on some of these things. But if you look at the taxable value for the entire City of Riviera Beach, you're looking at $5.7 billion worth of taxable value. But when we talk about the next line item you'll see is the statutory caps. The voters approved an amendment called Save Our Homes. And Save Our Homes was to allow for a cap on how much the growth can happen in somebody's homesteaded property. There's a statutory cap that even if the property appreciates in value, the most you will actually see, if it's a homesteaded property, is by 3 percent. That's the cap. So you can see, by that constitutional amendment, just this year, in a 2008 tax rule, it took off approximately $716 million that is not able to be experienced in the overall taxable value in the community. So when we have conversations about what constitutional amendments' impacts it has on our municipal entity, and why it's so important for you as the elected body to advocate and be involved in conversations in Tallahassee, these are some of the things that come out of citizen-initiated petitions, but also have an adverse impact on our ability to fund government. So then we go into, you'll see, the residential homesteaded properties, the value of those at well over $1 billion, and then you have your non-homesteaded properties. And there's also a cap with how large that, how big of a growth that those properties can see. And I think the statutory cap is no more than 10 percent. So again, then you have your assessed, a total assessed value of a little over $5 billion. And then you have another group of exemptions that takes another $911 million off of the total taxable value of the community. And so when you look at the bottom-line number for your total real property taxable value, you're looking at significant impacts that are happening because of either constitutional amendments or exemptions that are in the Florida's tax code. One of the conversations that's been happening in Tallahassee, and, you know, a lot of local governments talk about it, is that the Save Our Homes program has some fundamental flaws in it, because you can have two individuals that reside right next door to each other that receive the same service, but if somebody benefited from Save Our Homes when it was adopted versus somebody that moves into the home a year or two later, they can be paying $25,000 to $3,000 different in taxes, and they receive the same type of service. So there is some challenges as it relates to Save Our Homes, but the intent behind that was to make sure that folks that would retire in the state of Florida effectively would not see themselves taxed out of their properties. So you look at that, and when we look at the $911 million and then the $716 million, that is just for the tax year of 2018. Just imagine if you were to go back, how much money through exemptions was taken out of the tax system that local governments wasn't able to be able to receive as an added benefit to provide the municipal services. There's over 1,000 state mandates that local governments face, and so when these constitutional amendments or these exemptions are provided, it adversely impacts local government, and routinely, they leave the school board and other entities out of it. And we, at the local level, are the ones that feel it the most. And that's when you see the Florida League of Cities really advocate for home rule authority and allow for us to control our own destiny. So your total property tax taxable value is a little over $5.2 billion. The next slide, I think, is very important and is definitely germane to a lot of the conversations that you will have with your constituents, because when someone gets their tax bill invariably, they believe that the City of Riviera Beach collects all that revenue associated with it. So if you just indulge me for a moment, if you look at the gross property tax value at $100,000 that qualifies for a $50,000 exemption, and let's say it's a homesteaded property, the net property value is $50,000. And then when you apply our millage rate, that person is only paying $423 to the city. 38.1 percent of the taxes that they pay come to the city. The lion's share of the other 61 percent goes to the other taxing authorities. And so you can go and you can see the value that I believe we, as a local government, provide to our residents for a nominal cost for all the different services that are provided. If you look at the home that's valued at $200,000 with a $50,000 exemption, they then are paying taxes on $150,000, and they're paying to the City of Riviera Beach a little over $1,200, with their entire tax bill being $3,300. 61 percent going to the other taxing entities. And then a home that is valued at $2 million with a $50,000 exemption pays $16,000 to the city, and their entire tax bill is $43,000. So this is something that's very important, because invariably, when folks look at the level of service and all the things that we provide, and then when you break down exactly how much the city receives out of that, it's not enough to even fund your entire public safety operations in its entirety. You can fund police and fire, but not much more. And so that's important as we have the narrative, when we have the conversation, we create the narrative, that it's imperative that we diversify our funding streams for the purposes of how do we continuously sustain our operations moving forward.
Please let the record show that Chair Miller Anderson is on the dais.
The next slide talks about the number of residential properties in the City of Riviera Beach. And this goes to less than 25,000. This is a taxable value of less than 25,000. 18 percent of the housing stock falls within that category. From 25,000 to 75,370, 30 percent of your housing stock. And then for 75,000 to 100,000, you have 1,000 homes or 8 percent. And most of the homes in the community are over the $100,000 mark, which is 44 percent, or 5,400 homes, with a total residential units of 12,551.
Madam Chair, Mr. Manager, these are single-family homes?
These are...
You said units.
These would be considered as the residential, so it could be single-family and multifamily dwellings, correct, Mr. Sherman?
No. Multifamily is not included.
Is not included? Okay, so these are just single-family?
Okay, because that doesn't, that's not consistent with...
It would include condos, mobile homes, townhouses, and single-family.
Okay. Because that's not consistent with the number of utility accounts that we have, because we're in the 30s, right?
I think we're roughly at about 12,000-plus connections.
We have, actually, we're close, we're approaching 14,000 connections.
Okay. Thank you. The next slide talks on the average tax bill in the home in Riviera Beach. If you look at a single-family resident valued at 206,000 generates a tax bill of $1,700. And then if you look at another home that's average taxable value with a homesteaded exemption at $428,000, the tax bill would be $3,600. That goes to the slide that we spoke about earlier, that when you're looking at the different type of housing stock that we have in our community, it's so diverse that you can see the pendulum swing on both sides. One of the things that is pertinent to the conversation is that about 1,100 properties are 9 percent totaling about $673 million are not on the tax rolls at all. So there is no revenue, per se, that is collected off of those over 1,100 properties. And when you look at what other government entities are doing to generate revenue to be able to capture those properties, that's why the City of West Palm and other entities are looking at assessment-based programs, because the services are still available for those individuals to receive. Now, if the city wanted to consider a fire assessment, that is something that's probably about a year-long process. It would require an economic analysis of the budget for you to look at the provision of fire service. You can only assess for the fire element, you cannot assess for the EMS services. There is a standard fee that it costs the City of Riviera Beach to be able to be prepared to respond in the event of a fire. Some communities, it's called an availability fee. Some communities have at least some type of contribution that every property in the community pays an X amount, and then you have relative improvement value where you can, you know, do 85 cents per thousand dollars up to, you know, a certain threshold. But if that is something that the city was interested in, it would require an analysis on our budget. We would have to separate the EMS element of that, and then that would be something that you would have to go through the process, notifying all the properties. A lot of entities have also looked at utilizing that mechanism to supplant general fund revenue, to take off some of the burden off of the general fund for the purposes of funding fire service. So in Tallahassee, there's been a lot of conversations about a public safety or law enforcement assessment, but that hasn't gotten much traction. But the fire assessment in a lot of communities has. So that's something that, in future discussions, as part of the discussions and deliberations with the Board, if that is something that you wanted staff to explore, we can certainly look at that as an option. But it is a pretty lengthy process. And then the other side of it is that you would then also look to get your process validated so you can actually issue debt. So, you know, there's a lot of elements that would be involved in that process, in the event that the Council ever wanted to consider going down that road.
Madam Chair, the properties that are off the tax rule, what's the typical nature of those properties? Are these churches and other public facilities of some kind?
Some of them can be churches, some of them can be vacant parcels of land. It's a litany of different types of properties. But in my past experience, when we have done this, we've exempted religious institutions. But, you know, you can carve out those exemptions, but if you do carve out those exemptions, per the process, you have to utilize legally available funds to pay for that exemption. So the general fund would have to pay for that exemption that you grant for a religious institution if you were to carve out that exemption. So it's a pretty cumbersome process, but it's a way to provide capital that is dedicated solely and exclusively for the provision of fire service, that it cannot be utilized for any type of operations beside fire.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Manager and Mr. Sherman, I'm sharing the same sentiments. The 1,103 properties is just astonishing that we have that many properties in the city. And even still, I don't understand how a vacant property cannot be on the tax roll. Someone must own it unless it's, you know, owned by some sort of government agency or nonprofit. But here's where, I think I at least brought it up to Mr. Sherman in the past, too often I'm seeing organizations that are acting as businesses within the City of Riviera Beach, which should be paying a business tax receipt, that isn't paying a business tax receipt. And then many times, it's because they have a component such as a church, and they're operating a for-profit or revenue-generating childcare center, which we already know the amount of resources in the event that there's an emergency at a childcare center. And many of the times, we don't even know all of the churches that's registered. And I'm not suggesting that we put a tax on any kind of religious institution, but certainly, these properties that aren't on the tax rolls, we need to kind of figure out a way to be able to compile, you know, who we have in the city for a number of reasons. You know, our zoning code requires buffers between certain, you know, religious organizations and, you know, alcohol places that sell alcohol. And then not only that, to ensure that we're getting our fair share on the BTR side as well, because, you know, you can't be tax-exempt for one reason and then turn around and are revenue-generating for another. So I would hope that, you know, going forward in the future, we can put together some systems to be able to capture that and cross-reference some of these things, because, I mean, Mr. Sherman and I have had the conversation, it even exists with certain businesses that don't even have a separate business tax receipt for selling alcohol or tobacco, and ironically, they're registered with the state. So certainly, we need to be able to capture that, because 1,100 properties at $673 million of taxable value is quite a bit that is coming out of, you know, what could be in our coffers, in our general revenue.
Yeah, no, that's certainly something that, you know, staff would like to explore with the Board, to look at some options to effectively try to generate some revenue, because there is hard costs that are associated with all the services that the city provides. And in the event that you're able to add, in essence, more payers to the system, that effectively speaks to what I think this Board collectively would like to see, is the millage rate go down. So if you have $673 million of taxable value that is off the books, and if you're able to bring a fraction of that back into the conversation to help offset even the cost for the provision of fire service, then there's the opportunities for you to effectively start looking at your millage rate. Now, it can't be a swap, because it's hard to make the math work, but it can assist in taking incremental steps to effectively decrease that millage rate and have more payers in the system. But we will definitely look at that and bring some options back to the Board for consideration. The number of homesteaded properties in the City of Riviera Beach is a little over 5,400 properties. I think when we looked at the number, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Sherman, it was about 12,000 total parcels that we were considered residential parcels. So when we looked at the math, effectively, about 30 percent, 31 percent of the parcels in our community are homesteaded properties. And I think when we look at what are we going to do from a city perspective to promote more homeownership, that is something that conversations with the Housing Authority, with the CRA, how can we move that needle? Because I can tell you, from when I was here in 2017, that number was, 65 percent of the parcels were, you know, not homesteaded properties. Now, the number's grown to 70 percent. So we need to start trying to work on promoting homeownership, and that will assist in stabilizing our neighborhood and in our community. So that's something, big-picture perspective, as the Board goes forward with establishing your overarching priorities and giving marching orders to the other government entities that we work with that are dependent on some actions that the Board takes, that those are some of the charges that this Board should consider throwing out to those other entities to assist on.
Madam Chair. Go ahead.
I want to ask a question about, you know, given the fact that the median income for Riviera Beach residents is kind of low, how do we look at ensuring that if we want to increase homeownership, that people in that median income range can qualify for homes?
One of the things that we have, we've talked about, and we've thrown the concept around, is looking at training and providing, you know, those partnerships at the Board's retreat when you had the conversation with Palm Beach State College. How can we provide the opportunities for our residents to become better-trained, skilled in a different craft, and to be able to be gainfully employed in a career versus a job? The mayor has been adamant with respect to moving people out of jobs and into careers, and I think that's the conversation that we need to have. We had a discussion today about Chaney Brothers looking for CDL... looking for CDL drivers, that there's over sixty positions that are close to six-figure positions that they're looking for. So we even had the conversation, can the city work with a instructor to have a training to get people to get their CDL license? What can we do to effectively move that? But it's really going to be working with our academic institutions, working with some of our local employers, to really push up what the wages that they're paying from paying a ten-dollar or twelve-dollar an hour to a more livable wage. And the other side of it is, we as a government entity, I've seen situations where government entities have gone to their lending institutions that we do business with. So for instance, we have a relationship with TD Bank, and obviously, millions of dollars go through that lending institution to where the board can give a policy edict to staff to say, I want you to work with TD Bank, and let's see what we can do to have and establish a first-time homebuyers program. Or is this something that the board looks to invest its sector money in down payment assistance programs? So there's a litany of different things that we can do to try to get people pre-qualified and working. But it's, it's a multifaceted approach. But we can get people in homes, but we got to be able to make sure they can afford the homes, and it's not eating up most of their income. Because the rule of thumb is that your housing expenses for your living, where you pay rent or your mortgage should no, should be no more than thirty to thirty-eight percent max of your take-home. So to your point, Councilwoman, I think there's a lot of things that we can do. It's really working with a lot of entities and getting the charge from this board to effectively do that and look at how we can move the needle on that. The next slide is something that I think is, is important for us to discuss, is we, we have as a city, we have quite a bit of properties. The utility district obviously has properties for the purposes of lift stations and other things, and the CRA owns properties. These properties that are owned by us are off the tax roll. And I think there should be a conversation that this board has, that you look at your properties to maybe putting them into different tranches, where you say, these properties are for economic development, these properties are for infill development on the residential side, and then these properties are for public purposes in a future date. And then the board instructing us as to how you would like to proceed forward with the disposition of those properties, because you would have to designate those properties as surplus. We can easily have a workshop with the board to go over each of those properties, to tell you if any departments have plans with it. If we don't have plans for it, then move in getting those properties. If we identify it as a property that would be best suited with the housing authority, you can look to move some properties there. If you think it's better suited with us looking to partner up with some economic development, or to, to really make these properties work for us. Because right now, it's, it's off the tax roll. And the other thing about it is, when people look at our properties and they go on and see the assessed value, by statute, the property appraisers only require to put their foot on the property once every three years. So a lot of the properties that folks may go and see that it's a property the city of Riviera Beach owns, and it may be fifty thousand dollars, that is not actually the value of the property. So there are certain parcels that I would encourage you, probably all of them, that you would want to have an appraisal done before you would go through a competitive solicitation process, as opposed to considering something that's an appraised value. Because the appraised value, the tax collector is not appraising it for the purposes of just market value or what have you, because they know it's a government property. And so those properties are usually, you know, in some cases, drive-by assessments, but they, they're not where the market would actually demand for those parcels.
Madam Chair. I want to ask a question. So how many of the city's one hundred and seventeen properties are actually vacant? What percentage, you think?
I, I would have to get back to the board on that, but that's something that we can, we can be able to provide you. If I'm not mistaken, we may even have a book that has it broken into those specific categories and provide that to the board, and then give you, you all, the board, the opportunity to have some input and provide staff with some direction as to how you wish to proceed. But obviously, we have a vested interest in retaining some parcels for public purpose, but also getting them on the tax roll as well. The next item is specific to what Councilwoman Lanier said about the per capita personal income. And if you look at the per capita personal income, here over the last couple of years, the city of Riviera Beach is significantly lower than what the average is in Palm Beach County, the state of Florida, and the United States for that matter. So we certainly have to move the needle with regards to getting our folks into the fields of careers. Because the, the jobs that our residents and our, our community is offering at this particular moment is not allowing for us to be at the state average or the national average. And so that is something that, as the board sets its overarching priorities and looks to establish, you know, and reestablish some relationships with some of the industries we have in our community, is showing them the raw facts and data that we have the ability to really drive some social change in our community and give our residents an opportunity to be gainfully employed. But, you know, we're almost half of what the state average is and, and the national average. So we have to do something to change that, or we're going to consistently see the problem that we've talked about, the non-homesteaded properties, you know, continue to grow, and it then becomes a more of a transient rental community, and you don't have the real ties that the board would like to see with the generations of people calling Riviera Beach home. This next slide gets into the unemployment rate. When you look at the, we have seen some numbers decrease with the unemployment rate. We're at historical lows for the unemployment rate. But you can see that in our community, we haven't experienced some of the reductions that other parts of the, the country, other parts of the state have experienced. So there's still some work for us to do. But I think one of the things that this slide doesn't show you is who's underemployed. People may be employed, but they're underemployed. They may be working three or four jobs to be able to make ends meet. So they're showing in the labor statistics as employed, but it's to the point where you have that per capita personal income that's at twenty-three thousand dollars. So that's something that we need to be conscientious of, looking at unemployed, but also the underemployed. And to the, the comments that the mayor has made, moving from jobs to real careers and training people to fill those, those positions that are not just in our city, but also around in, in the industrial park and, and areas that, there's definitely enough work to go around. But we have to work with our local employers, because we, we do have, I, I would suspect that we do have a large number of folks that are underemployed versus unemployed. The next slide speaks to the biggest employers within the city. Obviously, the VA Medical Center is a, you know, the largest employer, followed by the, the school board, Chaney Brothers, Tropical Shipping, the city, Pepsi-Cola, LaKE Martin, Cisco Foods, Serta Mattress, and Farmer and Irving Corporation. So there are some big employers in the city. There are a lot of opportunities, but it's, it's incumbent upon us to find a way to make sure we engage those entities and really try to do, look at what the skill set they're looking for, and how can we assist in fulfilling that skill set. Because these positions as generations, you know, for the first time in U.S. history, you have five, even six generations in the workforce. So it's becoming profoundly more diverse. People are retiring, you know, so there is vacancies in some of these agencies and corporations. But where are they posting their jobs? What are they looking for? What's the skill set? What's the training? Those are things that we as a city should be acutely aware of and involved in to assist in helping them fill those vacancies and addressing the slide that we spoke to earlier about the per capita personal income.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans, would it be possible to reach out to these ten employers and get an idea of how many are actual Riviera Beach residents?
That is not a problem, Councilman. We can, we can definitely do that.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I already, I might have some of that data. I'll share it with you on the Workforce Development Task Force.
If we can get a starting, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. If we can get that starting point so that we can kind of build and grow on that, and then look for another twelve-month, three-year plan, how to grow those numbers with these organizations.
And Councilman, to your, your question, I'm also going to ask kind of what their average starting rate of pay is as well, so we can see relative to where we want to get, obviously, is at that state average for the per capita personal income. So we'll get that information as well and, and report that back to the board. The next slide here, I will turn it over to Mr. Sherman. And there's been a lot of information that has been communicated in the public with respect to the, the city's financial strength and our ability to, to fund government. And you've, you can see, based on the slide, that the city is, is in a strong financial position. And Mr. Sherman will speak to the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Yeah, I'm going to hit on a couple of slides here that the numbers may not mean anything other than someone who just lives numbers every day. But really, what they do is they really do lay out the fact of how strong the city's fiscal position is of itself. The city is a double-A rated community. So rating agencies go triple-A, double-A, single-A, and then, you know, you drop down to, to the B and C categories. So we are a double-A rated community. One of the things that the rating agencies do look at is the amount of cash that you have on hand. What their concern is, is when cash stops pouring in on a regular basis as a, as a normal part of operations. And think of something again like Paradise, California, or Mexico Beach, Florida. They want to know, can you survive? How long, you know, can you continue to go? Because you're going to still want your employees here. You, you still have to pay your bills. But there may not be anybody on the other side bringing any more cash in. So back in two thousand and thirteen, we had twenty-eight days of cash on hand. At that point, we were spending about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a day, which meant we had roughly about four million dollars worth of cash. Today, we spend about two hundred and five thousand dollars a day. So we're close to thirty million dollars in cash at the end of year, at the end of the year. Again, that is your reserves. That is what you will have, you know, should the, the need ever arise when cash is not coming in. This slide here, again, shows your fund balance as a percentage of your revenues. Again, I know everybody says, what should your fund balance be?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yes, sure.
I want to ask that question. When you talk about cash on hand and you say that, because you named two places, Mexico Beach, Paradise, California, which was a fire, and the other was a hurricane, what else could go wrong in the city that we don't have, I mean, other than catastrophic?
Right. There, there catastrophic, catastrophic-type items that, that are always going to be that call on the cash that, that you've got. And again, think of your own personal finances, you know, whether it's a water heater going or refrigerator, or your copper, you've got to have that reserve there. So, so those are a little bit different catastrophic, but in your personal life, it's a little bit different. But that's, that's really what it's, it's related to. You know, again, it's just planning for that unforeseen, you know, you're just in an area that, that is susceptible to those types of occurrences. You know, when I was in New England, we got snow. We could be shut down for days. But you know what? Come Saturday, it was melting. And, you know, and it's gone away, you know, and it, it wasn't property damage so much, and the residents weren't going anywhere. You know, if you look at something like New Orleans, they lost half of their population when Katrina hit. You know, a lot of those people never came back. So if you think about it, they're not going to be paying their water bill. They're not going to be coming in. And if you're losing businesses, they're not paying the business. They're not signing kids up for the football program. They're just not here anymore. But yet, your staff has to be here to bring you back up, to, to, you know, to do all those improvements. And again, it's not the FEMA doesn't provide cash, you know, this is really to, to keep yourself, you know.
Madam Chair, if I may, on, on this slide, the, the target i- is twenty percent. But I can tell you that most communities, if you go to GFOA, they're bouncing around ten to twelve to fifteen percent. So to be able to have a fund balance as strong as the city has, that's a very good thing. Because the city at any particular time, obviously, in the event that there's an emergency, you do have cash on hand. But if the city wanted to say, we want to pledge this fund balance for certain capital purchases that you wanted to pay cash versus get into debt issuance, you have liquidity to be able to do it and still have adequate cash to be able to have your rainy day fund. So you're, you're in a very good situation now. I can tell you that in, in certain other beach communities, they have a, a fund balance of seventy-five percent. Now, I can tell you, once you go over a certain threshold, the other argument is, you have all this cash, why are you not using it? Give it back to me. I'd rather have it in my bank account. So there is that delicate balance that we conscient, we have to be conscientious of as well.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So in the event that we wanted to do capital improvements, investments, this would be actually a good location for us to start with vesting some of the money that's here, i.e., we wanted to purchase a specific island, then we could take it from here. Just an idea, right?
Doesn't mean sooner.
But, so with the fund balance, we want to keep it at a certain percentage. Right now, we have about thirty million floating in there. Our target line is fifteen. That's where our base target line would be.
No, I think, well, twenty is what GFOA typically recommends, Government Finance Officers Association. But they do talk about the fact that it's, you know, you have to take into account where you're sitting in, you know, when you're coming up with this twenty percent. Again, I lived in New England, ten percent was sufficient. We didn't have those types of issues. When I first came down here, I talked to someone down in Homestead, and they said, get it as high as you possibly can, because you just don't know. And, and again, when you're talking to the rating agencies, they do take location into consideration. And they do look at both, not only the cash on hand, which is real cash pocket, but they also look at the fund balance, because this takes into account what may be on your balance sheet that hasn't been paid yet. So they're looking at your liabilities in this number, along with your receivables. But, you know, this is more on an accrual basis versus the cash basis. You know, twenty percent, I'd be nervous about. Thirty percent, I'd probably, you know, I mean, I think we're probably more looking at that range. So you have to look at, at both, again, how does it impact your fund balance and how does it impact your cash overall?
Follow-up, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
And to get us to that triple-A, where the double-A rating, where was, where's their recommended percentage at when it comes to cash on hand and fund balance?
They are, we get very high, strong ratings when it comes to the city's finances, the cash on hand, the fund balance. What pulls us down, and we've kind of talked about this past, is income levels, unemployment levels, you know, the general wealth of the community. And again, how, you know, what, what are the resources that the city has to put out to, you know, for citizenry versus what, you know, is self-supported? So, so those are the areas that really do need to be focused on to get up to that triple-A.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This slide here, what it does is it compares, in the green is the revenues that have been brought in since two thousand and thirteen, as compared to the spending, which is that reddish-yellow-orange color up there. And as you can see, every year for the past seven years, our spending has been less than the revenues we've brought in. Hence, the result, your cash balances go up, your fund balances go up. If I put the seven years up, prior to that, that Mr. Evans showed you on the graph, where we had the trough in the property values, most of those years, those numbers were flat. And the spending was, was far more than, than the revenues that were being brought in. So again, when we talk to the rating agencies, we're looking at those type of things. These are the types of trends that, that they obviously like to see. These are the types of trends that, that they obviously like to see. Then the other thing that they do look at is our debt per capita. Our debt per capita prior to 2014 was extremely low. We had little to no debt out there, a couple of capital lease-type issues. And then we borrowed funds to do some street projects, and we borrowed funds to finance the unfunded liability in our pension plans. So those are two big bond sales that we did, actually did two for, for infrastructure. So there's three, three bond sales that we did. But what we did with the unfunded liability, we had close to sixty million dollars of pension liability in our books, that the pension plans are charging you seven and a half percent for. So what we were able to do is go and borrow that money at three percent, fund the pension plans, which obviously makes your debt per capita go higher. But we are saving over a million dollars a year by having made that refinancing of that debt. We'll tell you, we're probably one of the few governments out there where all of our pension plans are over a hundred percent funded. So when we issued that debt back in 2015, that got us to a hundred percent. But clearly, at that point, think about where the markets have gone since 2015, all three of our pension plans are fully funded. Most government pension plans in the United States are in the sixty to seventy percent funded range. So when the rating agencies look at your debt, and they look at your liabilities, they actually take this into consideration. So we really just switched out one debt for another debt, where again, other municipalities still have that unfunded liability on their books.
The, oops, the next slide here is the goals that were developed back in 2017 by the city council, and have carried over in fiscal year 2018. At your retreat, you had the opportunity to discuss what your visions were for the city of Riviera Beach, and to establish or have the conversation for what priorities that you wanted to set as goals for the city. And we will be coming back with a synthesized report to you all that spoke to some of the items that the board discussed at your retreat last Saturday, and then have a conversation with you in a form such as this, to establish your overarching goals. Now, one of the things that I think is important is that those overarching goals, and so in this case, it's public safety, economic development, infrastructure, education, and demographics. Everything that is in the budget document, which is a spending plan, should support those goals. If they do not support those goals, that's then a conversation we need to have with the board. Is there a goal that needs to be shifted, removed, edited, modified? Because everything, as you, as the board, set as priorities, the spending plan, the budget document, should support those elements. And so as you take an opportunity to look at these, there are certain that, things that you want to edit, modify, revamp, eliminate, that's certainly up to the purview of the board. Because what staff will do is make sure that our goals and objectives are consistent with the overarching goals of the city council, and the information that you believe that you've heard from your constituents, and the things that you've seen in your, your time in office, as major overarching priorities. So that's something where you, as the board, set the priorities at the thirty thousand foot approach, and then we, as staff, fill it in at the five thousand, ten thousand foot approach. To be able to, when we say public safety, we can have measurable, quantifiable results as to how did we do with respect to public safety, economic development? What did we do to move the needle? Everything that we do from a department level needs to be measurable. And that provides the information that's necessary for you, as the policymakers, to say, is it worth investing additional capital in this? Or do we need to revamp, or even in some cases, eliminate a program for the cases that it's not performing and not giving you the measurements? But it's important that, when you set those goals, that we, as staff, bring you measurable items that can show that there's progress made.
Madam Chair. Let me ask Mr. Evans, give me an example, when you say, because I, I mean, I'm very big on measurable outcomes, and if we're going to do something, I want to be able to know that it worked. For example, for economic development, what's an example of that in terms of where we start, where we end?
So, for instance, let's say, economic development, and you had, you know, the Development Services Department says that, you know, the average time in which a permit is processed, right now, let's say it's ten days. And then we look and we bring you data that say, we're now processing in seven days. That we're the average, from a phone call coming in to a response being issued, used to be forty-eight hours, now it's twenty-four hours, from the initial site plan approval process, and going through the planning and zoning, and getting to the city council is, used to be a, you know, three-month process, now it's a two-month process. Those are the types of things, down to the granular levels, that we can give you measurements that say we can accomplish X, Y, and Z. And then we, as staff, quarterly, need to report back the progress that's being made. Because in the budget document, existing budget document, back in seventeen and eighteen, you have goals and objectives that the staff has put forth, but I don't know if the reports have been provided to say eighty or ninety percent of the progress, we, we accomplished eighty percent of the goals and objectives that were in my department's budget. We need to report back, and then we have to grade ourselves, that out of a hundred goals, that we accomplished seventy-five, and that's a grade of a C, or what have you. Because you, as the board, need to know, at any time where you need to shift resources, and that is the, the only way that that is able to be done is with measurable goals. The next slide speaks to the importance of diversification of the revenue stream. So I'll have Mr. Sherman talk about that. But you'll see, you know, the fifty-nine percent property tax, that's the part of the pie, but how important the other elements of that is to fund government.
Yeah, I think what this slide does show is that there is probably an over-reliance on the property taxes. Being close to sixty percent, probably, again, isn't healthy. Again, if you think, again, back to those catastrophic, catastrophic events, what revenue are you going to lose? You're going to lose property taxes. And what we've talked about for several years now, is how do we hit those other areas? Last year, we talked a lot about charges for services, and trying to, again, look, look at the actual services that, that the city provides, and where can we, we capture some of those? The other one that Councilman McCoy brought up is the license fees and permits, and making sure that those people that, or those companies that should be paying are paying their fair share, and paying, you know, really what, what they want, or what they, not what they want, but what they, what they should be paying. So again, we have to continue to focus on these. You know, again, if you're going to start pulling that, that property tax number back, something else has to fill that hole. Now, again, it doesn't necessarily always have to be revenues, because this is the expense side of the, the equation as well. But, you know, we only have about two hundred different sources of revenues that come into the city. There isn't a lot to focus on. But it's a matter, again, of pulling out those that can impact these numbers to the greatest, putting that focus on those, and trying to, to get a more balanced approach to our, to our revenue structure.
I know at one time, we were talking about having someone that goes out and tried to recover the business tax receipt. Did we, did we hire someone for that, or did we get some money in place to be able to make sure that everybody was paying that should be paying?
We have, we added two part-time positions a couple of years ago. People, part-timers, they come and go, is, is the problem with that. Right now, we have one, and he does go out. As a matter of fact, again, Councilman McCoy brought up the liquor license. In that case, we actually pulled the liquor license list from the state. And as you might imagine, there were a lot more on that list than on our list. And we've gone back now, and, and we have that on. And as he was doing that, he went out and he looked for, are they selling ready-made food? Are they selling cigarettes? So again, we, we tried to close that, those gaps. And that's really what, what he's doing in that regard.
So do you think we've made some progress with having that one, or do we need more positions?
No, I think we've made progress. I clearly would like to, you know, get the other one filled, because, because part of the issue is the hours. Sometimes you need somebody on the weekend, sometimes you want to have somebody at night, somebody, you know. So that's why we went to the part-timers. So when you only get the, that twenty to twenty-five hours a week, you're not covering all those hours. No, I think certainly when we had two, we were covering more. They're actually, we're going street by street, block by block, business by business, just introducing themselves and going through. But again, then when you lose them, you got to start it all over again. But yeah, I do think we've made progress. That business tax revenue has increased every year. And we haven't actually passed a rate increase probably in four years or so. So it, it's having an impact.
Madam Chair, if I may, to that point, that's, that's a measurable, that we would want to report back to the board as setting, you know, our, our fiscal policies to show that by an addition of this position, that the number was this in 2017, it's eighteen, nineteen, and so you can see that there is progress being made. But if we don't report that back to you all, you don't know if there's a need for additional personnel, or those types of things.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I just wondered, did Mr. Schultz share with you the analysis he did?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans, you know, to this same line of discussion that we're speaking of, about licensing and fees, I, I think it's important that we revisit the whole entire BTR process, starting from preliminary zoning verification. Because regardless of whatever business exists, I think, right now, our starting point for a business that comes into the city starts at the preliminary zoning. Because if they don't put the right information on that, then they essentially open their doors, right? Then they pick up other services along the lines. And now, it started out as retail, now there's somebody in the back cooking, then there's an ATM machine, and there's alcohol. And let me tell you, folks, members, I mean, we're talking about over a thousand bucks, probably, per store that we're losing out on. And it's very important when we have so many convenience stores. I think we've probably, if we could, put a moratorium on convenience stores, and, because it, it just becomes a problem. But I think the whole process has to be, you know, we have to start from the very beginning, because I think that's the only way we'll take a holistic and comprehensive approach at trying to address, you know, our, our shortfalls and what we're missing. And, you know, I was definitely curious, and I think you answered those questions, like these objectives that you spoke about in 2017, eighteen. I don't know if I've heard any kind of response on, you know, what, what that progress was. And, you know, obviously, I think we probably all know why. But certainly, this is something that I would like to see us doing forward, so we can kind of keep track of what we're doing and where we can improve. But certainly, there has to be some efficiency in the process, because I'm sure we should be earning more than, than just six percent in fees and permits.
And, you know, to the, the point that was stated by Mr. Sherman about the almost sixty percent of the city's revenue being ad valorem, that's consistent with what the county is. And most local government entities want to see that number, you know, sub-fifty, forty-five, more diversification. Because in the event that the economy gets a cold, and the housing market gets a cold, we feel it a lot harder. And by the time we collect the revenue and feel the impact, it takes a couple of years, as you've seen with the Great Recession, for us to effectively recover. So to Councilman McCoy's point, the more we can collect and be efficient on other revenue streams, even looking at an assessment for fire services and those types of things, to get away from such a reliant approach on ad valorem, the better off we will be for the long-term sustainability of the city.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sherman, I believe eighteen, nineteen budget, there was some sort of allowance that was put in place for the, I guess, the legislation that provided for the fee exemption for business tax receipt for veterans and seniors and low income. Do you know roughly what happened with that, and how we did as far as, you know, that impact on our budget? For eighteen, at least, in our last quarter here, roughly?
Not, not knowing what that impact was going to be, because again, we didn't have the data on it. We did keep the revenue projections relatively flat. We have not had anyone come in and file for any of those at this point.
Let me tell you why. And I can, I can tell you why we haven't had one, Mr. Sherman. I just think we have to revisit the whole entire standard operating procedures practice. And it's partly because what we've tried to adopt as a knee-jerk reaction was just almost impossible for somebody, we made it impossible for us to follow what the statute provided for with arduous regulations. And I just looked at what the county did, and I looked at what other municipalities did. You know, it was almost like, why go through the trouble of submitting all of this stuff to a city of Riviera Beach to get an exemption of a hundred and thirty bucks? And it was because the process that we created, nobody in Palm Beach County was doing it. And I just think it's totally unfair, and that wasn't the legislative intent. And I certainly had, you know, I, I expressed some frustration with us just coming up with something just completely arbitrary, and then it was not even defensible. So I, I think there's more to that conversation that has to happen. But clearly, it ought to say something if the legislator thought, the legislature thought it was important to have fee exemptions for disabled veterans, spouses of disabled veterans, those who are disabled, elderly, and low income. And you mean to tell me, of all of the businesses we have in the city, not one person got that fee exemption? It's not the legislation, I think it's the process. And we definitely need to refine that, because every day, and I think my conversations with the least, I think all three of you, the, the attorney, there has been cases where I've had individuals come and express frustration with just, you know, getting the right information. And it needs to be clear. I mean, when you go to our website, there shouldn't even be a need to ask staff a question. It should be a real, clear, and unambiguous process is, if you want to open up a ice cream shop, this is what you have to do. If you want to open up a mechanic shop, these are the regulations. And I think we make it sometimes more difficult than it should be.
We will definitely review the process and report back to the board the modifications.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans, timeline on the parking. We discussed that the last council meeting, but adding that as an additional revenue for the city. What is our timeline on getting some information back on parking?
Mr. Sherman, what's your thoughts with regards from where the analysis is to contracts? And, because you've had the opportunity to work with the consultant, and...
Yeah, we could actually get the kiosks at like the Ocean Mall in pretty easily. They, you know, it's a cement pad, they're solar, you know, it's just a matter of, of working on that. The issue would be, is updating our ordinances. Because our ordinances really aren't written for, you know, current technology and that. So that would be something I'd have to get together with, I guess, Mr. Gagnon and, and go over. But again, the equipment and whatnot, I don't think that that's a, a big issue at all, as far as getting that in. Well, I guess, again, we'll have to go back and talk about it, and we'll, we'll report back to you with, with something on that. I mean, I don't know.
Because if we can, we can certainly start, you know, we can plan for some type of revenue collection in fiscal year 2020. What we, we'll have to put a conservative number in there, of course. But to modify the ordinances, and then have conversations with the business community, as the validation and all that, I would assume that if we look at now being August, that hopefully, by peak season in November, we can have something up in operational by that time, by having the ordinance modify, modify the conversations with the business community, to where you're capturing, you know, the month of November, all the way to when our, you know, our busiest seasons, to Easter, and then obviously, in, into the summer. So, conceiv- So conceivably, we can be able to have something in there. But the number that we would put for revenue for the city would be a plug number. Because we won't know until we, you know, get to that.
Adding that as a revenue stream, even if not for this budget, but just to make sure we have incorporated making that a priority so that we can go through with zoning. And not just Ocean Mall, but also at the Marina for Peanut Island parking as well. So those are two of our major hubs that we can have. This is a strong line item to increase that percentage. So if we can get that, make that a, make that a priority.
Absolutely, Councilman. The, the next slide here is the full-time equivalent FTE position summary by department. And you can see that at the bottom, you have that in 2017, you had 528.5 FTE, to where now you have a total of 563 FTE. And there was a increase that was experienced in fiscal year 2018, and then also in 19. So total, your total work complement is 563 employees. And then, of course, the halves are part-time positions. And, you know, there's some other full-time, well, there's, it would be one FTE, but you may have four people in that one FTE. So that's why you see the, the numbers as far as positions. And people in the positions can be slightly different.
That's what I was going to say, because these positions, the numbers that we have here are not actual, actually all filled, right? And we have some that are not filled?
Right, and we have a slide that speaks to that, Madam Chair. One of the conversations that we've had with the board back in 2017 is the hidden paycheck. And what I reference as the hidden paycheck is that sometimes folks believe that if you pay an individual $50,000 a year, that's all it takes to employ them. So if you take a look at the slide, and you can look at your general employees, your general employee with the city pension, a police sergeant and a firefighter, you can see that when you look at all the other ancillary benefits that they receive from the city, an employee that's regular wages at $53,000 a year costs the city $74,000 to employ them. An employee that is making $48,000 a year with the city's pension is making nine, the cost to employ them is $91,000 a year. A police sergeant making $87,000 a year with all the other ancillary benefits, you're at $130,000. And a firefighter making $62,000 a year with all the other ancillary benefits, when you add overtime wage, longevity, medical expenses, those types of things. So when we look at our, our budgeting, and when we look at the, the position that it's posted at a certain starting wage, we call this the hidden paycheck, because the cost to employ somebody is increasing ever so much. You did receive a memorandum from me concerning the health insurance, and we'll speak in more specificities on that on the 19th, when we have our consultants coming in to share with you what type of modifications that we're considering to move forward. It is a deviation from the existing plan that the city has. But it has an opportunity for the city to render well over $800,000 in savings by making a modification to the plan that the, the city currently offers. In the event that the board wishes to move forward in that fashion, we would have conversations with employees. We would, during the open enrollment process, we would encourage the spouse or whoever the healthcare decision maker is to be present on campus to get all the information so they can make an informed decision. Also, the modification to the plan actually, in essence, puts a little bit more in employee and employee plus one's paycheck. But that's a more in-depth conversation that we would have with the board. But we did want to show this, because it's very important to know that it's just not 53 or 563 employees times whatever their wage is. There's a lot of other costs that it, that the city incurs to employ our workforce.
Mr. Sherman or Mr. Evans, the firefighters, do we not pay anything for their life insurance? In that last column down to the bottom, right?
We do. So if you look at the second line up there, it says city-paid life insurance general.
So is it something additional that we pay for?
They get, they get $40,000, so that's on that line. Those that get over $50,000, that's why there's a separate line. So the only one up there that gets the, the X, the higher life insurance is the police sergeant.
Okay, and so for police and fire, what's the, at least the, I guess, the pension contribution? What's that percentage? Is it based on the, I guess, the collective bargaining agreement?
Now, the percentage is actually determined, and we have three separate city plans. We have one for general employees, and one for police officers, and one for, or sworn police personnel, and one for the firefighters. Those are the three city-run plans. The firefighter plan and the general employee plan are closed to new members. They both now, new members now go to FRS. The firefighter up there is in the old plan.
It's got to be like 40%.
Yeah, it is. And then if you notice under the general employees, that's why we put one with FRS and one with city pension. Tried to find two people with close regular salaries. But you notice the pension contribution for FRS is 4890, and under the old city plan, it's over 16,000. So again, that's, you can clearly see why we were pushing to make pension changes.
Well, and, and the other thing about this as well is that, you know, when we give our employees a 3% or a 4% raise, there's other elements in here that are impacted as well. So it's not just they see the increase in their overall paycheck, your retirement contributions, a lot of other things are associated with that. So it's incumbent upon us at the staff level is to communicate that to the employees, the other costs that the employer pays for the purposes of offering that, that opportunity. And so when we get into contract negotiations, obviously, there, there's some, some wiggle room and some discussion. Because our concern is if, if we're not able to do something with respect to the rising cost for health insurance and other things, you become a situation where the board and administration have to start making tough decisions. And a lot of organizations have, had to have those discussions. And when we looked at the healthcare plan that we're presenting to you, it's consistent with what West Palm has done, what Boca has done, what Jupiter has done because of the rising cost of health insurance, and looking to make a, a change to stop the, the increases that we're seeing that are well over 20-plus percent.
And Mr. Evans, we still are going to experience that kind of increase, even in light of us not having many of those positions filled?
Yes, sir, because we, we have to budget with the assumption, and that's, we have to budget with this assumption that these positions are going to be filled. And I think that may even be the next slide. So perfect, perfect segue. So obviously, we had the conversation about, briefly about health insurance plans and coming to the board with some solutions. Because right now, that particular line item is at about $6.7 million for insurance. Right now, the city pays 100% for individual plans. And you have a situation per the labor contracts that if there is an increase, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sherman, that over 10%, the city can pass those costs on to the employers, however, we, the employee. But we believe that there's another way for us to effectuate the savings that the organization needs without having to pass the, the cost on to the employees. Because if you have a 28% increase, and then you tell your employees that we're going to split the difference on that, and they're going to pay, you know, 8 or 9 or 10%, and you're getting them, giving them a 3% pay raise, well, actually, they're seeing a reduction in their, their take-home wages. And so we're conscientious of that. So we're going to need some assistance from the employees to understand the dilemma that we're in here. And that's why we're starting to have the conversation. Because even though your renewal rates are based on actuarial science and all that, we've had a bad year. Claims to premium ratio, we're at 103%. So for every dollar that we pay the insurance company, they're paying, you know, the, the, the difference, the, the 3 cents or what have you. So they're in essence, losing money on, on the, the account because of some catastrophic claims. Now, those are supposed to be outliers, and you can throw those out. But based on the size of our plan, the number of life, the actuarial science shows that we should anticipate a 20% increase. It's not uncommon in today's healthcare market to see double digits increase every year. And so it's a challenge for us as to how do we continue to fund health insurance and provide some meaningful health insurance to our employees. So that's why we're wanting to have the conversation with the board sooner rather than later. If we're able to come to a conclusion that the plan that staff is going to be bringing forward to you is a plan that is palatable to the board and the employees, we can definitely start controlling our increase and hopefully get to a point where we're not having to revamp the existing health insurance plan. Because if we went with the existing plan that's in place, we would have to present to the board probably a 22 to 25% increase in health insurance from, from last year. And when you're talking about a $6.7 million line item, it's significant, significant. The other item here is the assessment of Barracuda Bay. In my conversations briefly with Mr. Sherman, back in 2017, we talked about that particular facility losing roughly about $350,000 to $400,000 annually. Mr. Sherman has told me that they have increased the fees associated with that, but it hasn't resulted in that number being decreased exponentially. So we're going to be providing you some actual information and having discussions with the board as to what's the best way to move forward with that. And if you look at reconstruction of your existing recreational amenities, maybe that's something that you incorporate, incorporate in your recreational spaces, so it's not its own standalone park, and you can have dual staffing and those types of things. But those are conversations that we're going to have with the board in future discussions as we talk about planning facilities. Me and the, the chair have had some conversations with respect to the vacancies that are present in the organization. And from the conversations and from the research that staff has conducted, there's a total of about 89 vacancies. And, and some of those vacancies are mission-critical that will need to be filled. But you have $3.2 million for the general fund, and over $700,000 in the utility district and stormwater. Some of those positions have been vacant from 2016. So in more detailed discussions with the board, we are going to bring you the positions that are vacant for longer than six to eight months with some type of explanation as to why this position has been vacant. Now, whether it's a department director position or a line-level employee, there would be some explanation. Because you also have the other side, is some departments are asking for additional positions as part of the FY 1920 budget. And there's a way to appropriate or re-appropriate some funds. But you're also carrying a lot of monies that you're, in essence, not utilizing. And I'm sure this board can find 3.2 million other things that they would like to do with some of the positions that we've been carrying for an extended period of time. So even on a conservative, if you said 40 of those positions are mission-critical, that's a sizable reduction that you can make to effectively invest it in capital or even invest it in your existing workforce. I think it's, it's safe to assume that this board would rather have a smaller, better compensated workforce than a large, poorly compensated workforce. Because we are budgeting the things that we showed you, health benefits, retirement, all that for those positions that have not been filled. And so it's critically important that we make a determination which positions are mission-critical, which positions can be reallocated, and which positions that as an organization, we may not need anymore. Because technology has changed, or the way in which we do business has changed. So that is something that we plan on bringing forward to having a more substantive discussion with the board and addressing that moving forward.
Madam Chair. Mr. Sherman, when we don't fill those vacant positions, are those funds going into that general fund? Is that where that money is in addition to?
And, and the other, the other thing about it as well is that no one ever wants to assume this, but you don't want positions left vacant as a savings account for departments, that you don't budget X in a certain line item because you know you can pull from vacancies in that. And so that's one of the things that we really want to clean up with departments. Ask for what you need, but don't leave positions purposely vacant. Because there's a lot more to a position that's a $50,000 a year position. Because you can see there's just about $40,000 worth of benefits that are associated with it, give or take. So we're going to be making sure we make that correction and adjust that, and making sure that we don't carry vacancies for that, that long of a time. And this is what the calendar looks like. We will be convening again with the board on the 19th. That's going to be immediately following the presentation from Dr. Robinson on the state of education here in Riviera Beach. On the 22nd, that's when you will get the presentations from the, the departments in more specificities. And they will be able to also, I will have them report out a couple of their major goals and objectives that they accomplished, and things that will probably be carryovers into fiscal year 1920. But understanding that they must align with the board's, the board's priorities. The meeting on the 29th, we're going to see if we can probably alter that meeting. Because it is something that Mr. Sherman and I had a conversation about, the ability to maybe have a meeting earlier than the 29th for the purposes of posting the document and getting it out there for public consumption a little earlier. So we will work with the board and your legislative aides to pick a, a date that works within the, the scheduling parameters that the council has. And then September 3rd, we have the Palm Beach County Public Hearing. Then we have the school board's public hearing on the budget. The 5th is going to be our first reading. And then the 18th is the second and final reading. But between the 5th and the 18th, we will have another opportunity to convene with the board to discuss any feedback that you get from the community as a result of the September 5th meeting, to make any tweaks that you may want to make in the budget document before it's finalized. And that concludes the staff presentation for this evening. If the board has any questions, myself, Mr. Sherman, prepare to address any comments, questions, or things that you would like to see addressed as part of subsequent discussions with the board in the budget process.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I, I did want to make sure that you bring back the information in terms of the vacant city properties. Make sure that you bring back information in regards to ideas for economic development in terms of low-income individuals, the purpose of homeownership.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
A few things. So, Mr. Evans, to your point that you mentioned earlier about having designated those, those city properties in economic development, public purpose, and workforce, housing, I certainly like that idea. And more specifically, to speak to that email that we got, I think, from the Housing Authority, there was a proposed policy change about disposition or sale or exchange of real property. I certainly want to see if we can bring that up to the body for discussion and deliberation at our next available city council meeting. deliberation, um, at our next available, um, city council meeting. Also, I would like to see, I, I'm, I'm looking at the eighteen-nineteen budget, and we do see what the FTEs that were budgeted for, but do we have an actual as of today, um, those positions that are filled?
Uh, we can pull that information and, and send that to the board electronically.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, um...
FY eighteen-nineteen.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? You're done?
Yes.
I just wanna be sure that the comments we made and the ideas we, that were generated at our Saturday workshop are at the forefront of your mind. I, for example, am very, very concerned that we have someone in charge of workforce development in the city, uh, and that we establish, you know, that, the, a posi, maybe it's a position or, or, or someone under the, the planning, the, uh, the development office, someone that can really be in charge of that so I can hand it off.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans, I want us to really just kinda look at some creative ways of increasing this revenue stream, looking at the parking, really building out that idea, looking at how we can perfect our licensing, our fees that are currently collected. Something that we can do to offset this millage rate and bring it down for our residents by increasing our additional revenues that are already coming into the city.
Anyone else? I think everybody's pretty much wrapped it up. And, um, how we can lower our water bill, that is probably the, at the top, and, and being able to bring our millage down. So when, when your departments are looking at their budget, what are you asking for them to, um, bring it down? Ten percent or twenty?
Mr., uh... No comment, no. Uh, Mr. Sherman and, and Ms. Jacobs have had co, initial conversations with departments to, to balance out the budget. So there's some fine-tuning tweaks that we have to make. But I think, Madam Chair, to your, uh, concern with respect to the, uh, utility district and the water bill, I think one of the best things for us to do is to look to proceed forward with that forensic audit.
Yes.
Uh, because I think that's going to allow for us to dive in there and see if there's some things that we can do differently as far as efficiencies or lost revenue opportunities. And if we find out that there's three or four hundred thousand dollars annually that, for whatever reason, it's not going through the meters or whatever it is, that provides us the opportunity to then start having the conversation about what can we do to effectively reduce that, that water bill. Um, so I think that would be something that we will present as part of the utility district budget.
Yes, please, too, yeah, that, that forensic audit has been on the table for a minute there, so... Anyone else? Um, we still have a lot of time left, everybody. Everybody's good?
Madam Chair, the, um, I will defer to the city attorney. She has something that she wants to, um, advise the board, and then, um, I will have just a couple of closing remarks.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have the announcement of a closed executive session request.
Mm-hmm.
Pursuant to Florida Statute two eighty-six point zero one one eight D, public meetings and records, and in a desire to obtain advice concerning litigation, I'm requesting a time that the city council is available for a closed executive session in the matter of Dominic Washington versus the city of Riviera Beach, case number five zero two zero one eight, CA zero one two zero eight nine, XXXX MVAI. And the next, at the next city council meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, can members of council meet prior to the meeting?
What, five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
That's fine with me.
Yes.
Therefore, a closed executive session will be held on the twenty-first day of August two thousand and nineteen at five-thirty PM at City Hall Council Chamber, six hundred West Blue Heron Boulevard, second floor, Riviera Beach, Florida, three, three, four, zero, four. Again, in the case of Dominic Washington versus the city of Riviera Beach, case number five zero two zero one eight, CA zero one two zero eight nine, XXXX MVAI. Those persons in attendance will be myself, city attorney Dawn Nguyen, special counsel, Loniel Oles Esquire, and Victoria Oles Esquire of Olson Stevens, Mayor Felder, members of the city council, and city manager Jonathan Evans. The subject matter of the closed exec, executive session shall be restricted to settlement negotiations and/or set, strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Evans?
Uh, Madam Chair, I do wanna say, uh, the, the workshop with the board this, uh, this past Saturday was, was exceptional. Um, I commend the, the leadership from the board in really setting a course for just not our community over the next couple of years, but our community in, in twenty-thirty. And so we, we can't wait to present the information back to the board and really work with you to making sure that that vision stays in the forefront and the effort and the, uh, um, the passion that this board displayed was something certainly that I, I know the community will, will rally behind it as it was contagious. And so, uh, kudos to the board for, for your leadership and, uh, your commitment to, uh, doing more sessions like that to work through how do we move the city forward. Uh, this presentation was to really just start the, the foundation as far as the budget process. We will make this PowerPoint available for public consumption on the city's website first thing tomorrow. If there is any civic associations or groups that are interested in hearing these presentations as we go through the budget process, myself or the new assistant city manager, Ms. Deirdre Jacobs, uh, would be glad to present those, um, slides to anyone that is interested in, uh, in hearing about the budget process and, and what that entails. And, um, I have made my first, uh, staff appointment, and that is making Ms. Deirdre Jacobs the assistant city manager. Uh, she would have oversight over the clerk's office, development services, the library, and public works. And so if there's any problems, she's the person to call for any of those issues.
Gladly pass that off.
Was those departments again?
Yeah. The clerk's office, development services, library, and public works. Uh, she has a wealth of knowledge and experience. Uh, she does have a graduate degree from a okay academic institution. It's a, named Florida State University. Um, but she is gonna become a member of the Florida City County Management Association and then work towards her professional credentialing as a credentialed manager. Uh, so I'm glad to have her, uh, as part of the team, and she's done an exceptional job in, uh, rallying the, the employees and being accessible and has been a, a great help as I've transitioned, uh, back to this role. So, um, we will be putting out a press release, but, uh, you know, Ms. Jacobs and, and the board, thank you for your support and looking forward to working with you through this budget process.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that, um, he said okay Florida State, but you forgot to mention her undergraduate at Florida A&amp;M University, which definitely makes her an exceptional...
Well, you know, uh, as, as a point of, of privilege, uh, me and, me and Councilman Lawson, uh, the reason the twenty-ninth of August doesn't work very well is that's the home opener, UCF versus FAMU.
Little nights?
So, uh, there, there's gonna be a little trash talking between them, and so...
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Point of personal privilege, so, um...
We got a lot of that tonight.
Yeah, um, so Chairwoman Botel brought us in, and she neglected in saying the invocation should've been done by Shirley Lanier. She said moment of silence, so the agenda calls for invocation, so, um, Councilwoman Lanier, you gotta, you, you have a, a prayer or something? A religious scripture? But that's what the agenda said, and this is the first I ever seen it say invocation, so I, I wanted to point that out.
Okay.
Go ahead and pray.
Lord, uh, we're about to leave. So thank you for a wonderful meeting, and we look forward to many, many more. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other point of privileges, we stand adjourned.